I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Vice Chair Ryan. At this time if I could get a motion regarding approval of the agenda, some of...
Second.
Okay, I have a motion second and a discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we are in open session and I would like to take this opportunity to thank the individuals who submitted letters of interest. And at this time, I'm gonna name those individuals. Nathaniel Alexander, Marty Loudermilk, Miles McLean, James Safrat, Cindy Sellers, and Tammy Smith. The format tonight, the interviews will be done independently. So, we will follow the following list. We will first via telephone, we will speak with Miles McLean because he has a work conflict, but we'll get the technical part of the interview over first. We anticipate, and we would like to stay in a 10-minute timeframe, but there's, you know, if it runs over, as with every meeting I have ever attended here, 10 minutes is, it's a goal. It's not a mandate. The next will be James Safrat, Cindy Sellers, and Tammy Smith. But I would like to take the liberty, at this time, we had one submission that didn't meet the general statute, and it had to do with age. But I'm, I was really heartened to know that we have a student in our school system who is eligible to vote, is over 18, works a part-time job, and just a wonderful young student that took the time to submit a letter of interest, a wonderful resume. They have stated they want to attend a two-year college and then transfer to a four-year college. And that's what we need, not only in this community, but in this country. We need young children who aspire to be public servants because, and so I think that we, as a board and as the school administration, if we should, we should publicly acknowledge the efforts of Nathaniel C. Alexander. He lives on Cheatham Ford Road. It's hard enough for an adult to file for an election, go through the campaign, and then serve the public. Many people have done that before us, but I was just exceedingly happy to see this come in, and I just wanted to make note of that. We had another submission that we'll not interview, chose not to interview, and they have prior elected service. But the statute is very clear as to how we are to go about. It says all vacancies in the membership of the Boards of Education, whose members are elected pursuant to the provisions of the subsection. It's the Board's job, the remaining members of the Board, to appoint a person to serve until the next election. And so that's, with this process, that's what we hope to, the objective we hope to meet. Now, it's exceedingly difficult, and you'd say, "Oh, just name a name." But, you know, we live in an environment where we depend on the electorate to elect a candidate to serve. And in this rare circumstance, the remaining Board members were the electorate. So, all our proceedings will be in public. The discussions we have will be here and open, but we do appreciate the rigor and the effort and the willingness to serve on this Board. So, without further ado, if you'll ask Grenada.
Renee, will you take the candidates to the conference room, and we will certainly send you after them when we're ready, okay?
Hello.
Hello, is this Miles?
This is he.
Miles, it's Jennifer Hefner. How are you?
I'm doing well, how are you?
Great. Listen, our Board meeting has started, and I needed to know, can you hear me okay?
Yeah, I can.
Okay, very good. I'm going to turn everything over to Chairman David Odom.
Alright.
Hello, Mr. McLean. We hope that you're in a safe environment, and we're gonna go through approximately a 10-minute question and answer process. And Vice Chair Bridget Ryan will be asking the questions, and just answer at your leisure. The questions that you are answering are identical to the ones that all other applicants will be answering, so the playing field is level. So, at this time, I'll recognize Vice Chair Ryan to ask you a few questions.
Hi, Mr. McLean, can you hear me? Mr. McLean?
I'm having a little bit of a hard time hearing.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, yeah, I can.
Alright, we've just got a few questions, and our first one is, please tell our group why you're interested in serving on the Alexander County Board of Education.
Well, through my, you know, career through the Department of Social Services with the Child Protective Services Unit, I'm pretty dedicated to the use of the area and want to ensure that, you know, all aspects that we can provide for them are kept in a positive manner, you know. And I also am from Alexander County and grew up through the school system and have a good understanding of what was available and what was lacking in the school system also. And I feel like just having that point of view on it, to be able to provide new aspects to what we could change about the system to help our kids to make sure that they have what they need to succeed in life.
Okay, alright, thank you. What do you, our number two question is, what do you perceive as being the most concerning state and national issues facing public education at the present?
I feel like the biggest safety to public education is just making sure that their values are kept where education itself is always the priority and that the kids are always put first, where budgets and money is not the deeming factor of a child's future. And that way, that different curriculums and stuff like that is always moving forward to produce a better education for the kids, and not letting money and all that dictate what happens to their lives.
Okay, alright. Number three is, what are some of the obstacles our school system is currently experiencing, and what is your role as a Board member to help overcome these challenges?
I think some obstacles that I've been able to observe going through the school system itself was that it's very, it's deeming to want a child to go all the way through to either college, and then that's, you know, the only option, where I do think there needs to be more options for those who college is not the option, in the answer to what they want to do with life. I think installing like collaboratives with local entities, entities and agencies would help where kids would not have to work only on, you know, honors classes versus not honors classes, where they're being trained to be successful adults based on what they want to do with their own lives.
Okay, thank you. And our last question is, what strengths will you bring to our Board that will benefit our current Board and school system?
I know from being, I guess, in the know with what's going on in the county, there's a lot of decisions that will be made about schools and different things like that. And with my position, I'm able to, I'm pretty able to like make the right decision what's best for the kids, and understand what needs to be done, and that's gonna benefit everyone in the future. And my personality's pretty deliberative, and always works towards what needs to be done, and does the best to accomplish that goal. And that would benefit the Board.
Okay, alright, thank you. Is there anything else you'd like to add that you've not told us?
I think just, you know, working with the county and being able to be with the children, and because most of all my foster kids that I work with, you know, I'm closely in the school system, seeing what they're going through, and just trying to make the best of like their situation gives me perspective on what needs to be done on the student side. Because the students, the staff, and the teachers are what it's about, you know, it doesn't really matter about what's best for the overall, but it's what makes their lives more important, is what we need to impact those.
Okay, alright, thank you.
You're welcome.
Does any, I'm sorry.
Any additional questions or any comments?
Miles, this is Matt Cooksey.
Yep.
One of the things I caught you said is that your experience in being in the school system led you to have ideas about how things were going good and also things that going bad. Out of curiosity, what would be one thing that you would try to change if you were on the School Board about your school system life that you had had here?
Could you repeat that?
Wow, that's long. You were talking, can you hear me, Miles? Because we're...
Yeah, I can try to hear you.
We're gonna try it this way. Miles, can you hear me through the mic?
Uh, sorta.
Miles, what I was asking, you mentioned that the school system had pluses and minuses for you. If you were here, what was one thing you would like to change about your experience from high school that you'd be better prepared for college?
I think just, you know, always focusing on what options are there, because I remember when I was in high school, it was very basic to, you know, very minimal careers, and there wasn't a lot of educational options and everything that's available, you know, not only here in the county, but across the state. And I think working on education with the counselors and all that to make sure everyone's understanding of what options we could do for our kids, if it be military, or universities, private colleges, everything like that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. McLean, this concludes this interview. We appreciate your time.
Alright, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
James Safrat.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening. At this time, Vice Chair Ryan will ask you a series of questions.
Alright.
Mr. Safrat, please tell our group why you're interested in serving on the Alexander County Board of Education.
Alright, so, moved here about a year and a half ago, so I've been in Alexander County for just a couple of months, and just excited about wanting to serve in the community, wanting to help out our students. I'm a youth pastor at Sulphur Springs Baptist Church, and so have several students in all of our school systems, and try to be at the schools as much as I can, interact with the students. And so just wanna try to make a positive impact in our community, help students be able to succeed as best they possibly can. And so just looking forward to the exciting opportunity that this would be able to open up for me, what we have going on, so yeah.
What do you perceive as being the most concerning state and national issues facing publication, public education at the present?
Can you repeat that one more time?
Yes, what do you perceive as being the most concerning state and national issues facing public education?
Okay, most concerning to me is just the overregulation, I should say, just too much control on what the principals can and can't do. I'd like to see a little bit more freedom in those areas. Some of the biggest, other than just that side of it, is just the ability for our guidance counselors, been in a couple of the schools recently, and one of the guidance counselors said they just needed more assistance and more help with the issues that the students are dealing with. And so I think that students are dealing with more now in pressures of life than they've ever dealt with, even in the 12 years that I've been out of high school. The pressures of society, as well as parents and teachers and everything, it can be hard on students, as well as other students, just pressuring them, and the bullying, that's a big aspect of it. But just the guidance counselors, I believe, have, want to do, and want to succeed, but they don't have the ability because of the lack of, I don't know, resources, or whatever it may be. So I think that could be a big area that could be improved on as well.
What are some of the obstacles our school system is currently experiencing, and what is your role as a Board member to help overcome these challenges?
Well, I've only been here a year and a half, and I haven't really heard a lot of obstacles or things that people are struggling with in that area. I don't know if it's the couple that I've heard in just the recent time that I've been here. It could be financial, just some financial struggles of schools wanting to do something, wanting to add on, but not having the ability of finances. So that could be a struggle there. And then just trying to figure out budget-wise of where we can go from there to help out the schools as best we can, the ones that are struggling, the ones that need those assistance and those needs.
And what strengths will you bring to our Board that will benefit our current Board and school system?
So I've been a part of a Christian school in Idaho for four years when I, before I moved here, and so I was the vice principal there for, as well as the youth pastor on staff there at the church and school. And so I was pretty instrumental in helping the school out and being able to direct the students, which is a level-wise scale of a public school system. I do understand that's a lot bigger in grander scale, and so I've had some experience in that area, and I just think that young, being able to relate to students a little bit better with my age can help out. And then also just outside eye, coming in from not being raised here, not grew up here, seeing how other school systems work. I've got family members that work in Rowan County School System, as well as a good friend of mine who's on the Board of Rowan County School System, that I go to for a lot of advice. And so, being able to have those thoughts and connections with other people, really be able to expand our thoughts and different ideas that can be brought in from new, younger blood and new life in a community can always help out. And so I would hope that I could bring some great thought, some great change, not necessarily a lot of change, but just some great outside, out-of-the-box thinking that could help out.
Is there anything else you'd like to add that we didn't ask?
I think I've done a real good job of asking questions, so.
Alright.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Safrat.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Cindy Thomas Sellers.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Good, how are you?
Okay, at this time, Vice Chair Ryan will ask you a series of questions.
Ms. Sellers, please tell our group why you're interested in serving on the Alexander County Board of Education.
I have something to give you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, sure.
Thank you.
I was born and raised in this county, had the privilege of attending head night school, grades one through 10, and then enjoyed going through the consolidation of the three high schools. Went to Alexander Central and graduated in 1972. And then, I did my student teaching at Bethlehem School, taught my first year at Whittenburg, got married, and moved away to taught in a couple of other school systems. Eventually came back to Stony Point, where I really enjoyed working there with the students there for several years. And when, when I went to Little Rhine, I really never wanted to do anything but be a teacher. So I've always been interested in education. And, and I've always thought since 2000, since moving back here, I thought I might try to do this sometime. And so the opportunity came up, and I thought, well, okay, I'll just throw my hat in the ring. I, of course, I did have a college degree, as do my children, and really believe in higher education. My son has a master's, and also patriotism is a, is a big thing also. My son's in the Air Force, and was a U-2 pilot, now he's flying for Southwest Airlines, but he's still in the reserves. And my daughter-in-law is in the, is the Air Force, she's in the Florida National Guard, and she's studying for her bar exam now, which I hope she's gonna pass. But that's the 23rd, I think, and so excited for her. But they both still are serving. So I have a strong patriotism, love my country, and I have always tried to instill that in my students. And so I just felt like that it may be time for me to step up and serve, and try to serve here. I have high regard for you guys and the hard job you do. And I love to volunteer my time, I love to listen, I think that's a big part of your job, is to listen to the parents. And I want the best for the students in this county, because I think our children, on the last paragraph, they are our greatest resource. And our full attention should be given to developing their God-given talents and potential, no matter what economic background that they come from.
What do you perceive as being the most concerning state and national issues facing public education at the present?
That is a pretty easy answer for me. Privatization of schools all over this, the whole country. And the legislators defunding the public school system. And I think that's a big mistake, because what it leads to is the desegregation of schools again, basically. And I believe, my, my children went to State School High School, and went to the State School Public Schools, and a lot of times, they were in the minority at their schools. And I think their lives were enriched by those other folks. They were the minority. So, I think the more life experiences that you get being around people of different backgrounds is really great for all children. And I think that we need to be sure that our schools are funded. I know that's a struggle you guys have here too, in our state, it's the same thing. I believe in all education. I don't see anything wrong with parents having a choice of sending their schools where they want to, but just don't take it away from public education.
What are some of the obstacles our school system is currently experiencing, and what is your role as a Board member to help overcome these challenges?
Well, I think finance is probably, it's hard to not go to make a budget when you don't really know necessarily where the money's gonna come from. And with children going to the other schools, when school starts, by a certain date, you have to have your number of children in your school system, and that's how you're funded. And then, if they pulled out to go to private schools, charter schools, and then they come back in, then you still have to fund those children's education. And the money was not given to you by the state to do that. So I think all finance in general is a, is a big problem.
What strengths will you bring to our Board that will benefit our current Board and school system?
Well, I love people. I enjoy, you know, being around folks, and I would, I think I would have to have an open door at my, I know that's gonna be a challenge at my office, you know, when people may want to come in and talk, but I would be glad to do that. Probably set some times, you know, when I can do that, have an appointment or whatever for those folks. But my door would be open for any challenges that people are having. And then, of course, I'd want to go by the guidelines of the Board, the rules, I think rules are very important, and try to do that. Also, I think I could, holding confidence matters, and try to make a good outcome for everyone.
Is there anything you would like to add that, that you've not told us?
Just be glad to serve, if I could, you know, if I could do that, be glad to.
Thank you, Ms. Sellers.
Hello.
Hey, Ms. Smith.
How are you?
At this time, Vice Chair Ryan will ask you several questions.
Hey, Ms. Smith, please tell our group why you're interested in serving the Alexander County Board, on the Alexander County Board of Education.
Well, I am very interested in our county and our community. Sugarloaf seems to be the smaller community in school, and I attended Sugarloaf, and so did my daughter there. And I just feel like I could represent our community from my standpoint of being a lifelong Alexander County resident. Graduated from ACHS, and went to Wilkes Community College for two years over there.
What do you perceive as being the most concerning state and national issues facing public education at the present?
Well, I think the salaries and money that the teachers get paid is not enough. That is a very difficult job. I have subbed from kindergarten up to high school, and that takes a special person, and I think they should be paid appropriately.
What are some of the obstacles our school system is currently experiencing, and what is your role as a Board member to help overcome these challenges?
Well, I think safety is the number one issue on everybody's mind with the way the world has turned today. I don't really have a good idea of what we could do, but would love to be involved in implementing any plan.
And what strengths will you bring to our Board that will benefit our current Board and school system?
Well, I'm a very honest, generous, and loyal person. I would be, my time is available at any time. I could, you know, volunteer, go to meetings, go to Raleigh if we need to. I would really like to stand for our county and move our county forward.
Is there anything you would like to add that you'd like to... Is there anything you would like to add that you've not told us?
No, I just would like to get involved in my county. I never really have been politically, you know, I'm nonpartisan, not registered Democrat or Republican like that. Would like to get in to see the workings behind the scenes of what, how our county operates.
Thank you. Appreciate that. That concludes our interview portion of the meeting. And we certainly appreciate, everyone did a very good job and
You did.
Let the record state that you did better than any group of candidates that we have ever interviewed in the history of this board. So hats off. So at this time, I think that we will call for a brief recess to review our notes. And then following that, we will come back in and I will open up the floor for comments or discussion from the board. And the board can decide whether they are ready to consider this or if they want to reconvene at a later time. But, but I do think a few minutes for us to review our notes is appropriate at this time.
...
We're discussing the snow and the temperature during our recess, so we were multitasking. At our prior meeting, when we scheduled these interviews, the board moved to adopt Option A, which is the motion invoke method in an open meeting. A member may make a motion, something to the effect that, and this is for example, I move that Micah Henry fill the vacancy of Henrietta Miller's seat. If by the regular procedures of the council, that motion receives a majority of the affirmative votes, then Micah fills the vacancy. If it does not, then a new motion is in order. With that being said, I will, I will open the floor regarding this matter to the council.
Mr. Chairman, the way I see our charge, and let me say, I was really impressed with, with every interview. I mean, I just, I think any, any of our people that have shown interest in it would make a fantastic board member. I, I don't have any reservations there. But one thing that, that I have to speak to is that, to me, part of our charge is, okay, first of all, children first, and then also to elect someone who we know serves District Four well. Because as of right now, we're still in separate districts, so we have, we have to look at that part of it. And Mr. Lautermilch, showing his willingness to serve, he has eight years of voting record that I will, I'll say that we didn't always agree, but that's not what it's about. It's about him doing what he sees as best for children, children. And, and I will say that I think he put every one of his votes to what I would perceive as being children first. And then he also has served two full terms on the school board. And that, to me, tells me that he served his district the way the district wanted to be served. And like I said, any of these candidates would be well-suited. I, I don't have a reservation and will be happy with however it goes. But I had to speak my mind that when we have a candidate who has eight years' experience, who has been elected by the district that we're asking to fill the seat for, and that I, in my heart, know that he did what he perceived as putting children first, then I, I would be amiss not to nominate Marty to fill this seat.
We have a nomination for Marty Lautermilch. All in favor of the nomination, raise your right hand. Okay. Does not constitute a majority, so the floor is open at this time for additional nominees.
Mr. Chair, I agree totally with Harry that Marty done a fine job, and I have absolutely nothing against that, and it would be perfectly fine for him to serve. From tonight and everything, I've heard all you guys done a great job. And any, any of y'all would be fine on the board. It would be a, a pleasure for any of us to serve with you. Just from what I've, I don't really know any of you guys, very little, and that's fine. Just from, from experience and what I've seen and what I've heard tonight, I think Cindy Sellers would have the experience to, to help us and help us grow. I feel like the boards were in a critical place. It's time for us to unite, and, and we've got a lot of things to do in the next few years. So I would nominate Cindy Sellers.
Okay, we have a nomination on the floor for Cindy Sellers. All in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, we have a majority. So Cindy Sellers will be, will fill the vacant seat in the district.
If I could offer just a brief comment? I think I'm the only person on the board, I don't know if any of y'all knew this or not, but the first time I ran, I lost thirty-seven votes, but I still lost. But I ran again, and this will be my, coming up on the end of my third term. So if you're really dedicated and want to help, don't, in this role, don't give up. Try again, and otherwise, still be involved in our school system, because we need all the help we can get. So I just wanna, I don't think anybody else has that perspective, because it's hard when you walk in, you throw your hat in the ring, and you really genuinely want to help and to serve. And if you're not successful the first time, it kind of hurts a little bit. But don't, don't give up, and just keep going and, and keep helping. So thank you. Thank you, Chairman.
I'd like to add another comment. Tammy, I don't know you, James, I don't know you. I would like to know you, especially after listening tonight to what you shared and what you do. I work a lot in the community, and one of the comments that all of us are talking about in the nonprofit world is the absence, growing and growing problem of finding volunteers. I think we were all pleasantly surprised at the number of people that, that did this. We, we did not, at least I didn't expect it. They had trouble finding people to run, and that seems to be becoming part of the problem in our community. So please stay active, find places. I can guide you to quite a few places that need people that right now really can make a difference and touch kids. And this election, in two years, the seat is open again. And I think all of us would love to, I personally can speak for my district, if someone else is out there, I would, I would love to see people running for the seat and wanting to be in this role. So thank you for what you did, and I hope I get to know you.
I'd just like to say thank you for coming out and taking the time to, to interview with us. It was nice to get to talk to all of you, because, you know, we, we don't know everybody, so I appreciate your time.
Okay, I, I think there is a definite consensus among the board that we are very appreciative of your effort. And the great thing about this form of adoption that the board chose at the prior meeting, in essence, it's hard if you find, if you find unanimous decisions all the time from a board, you, you get kind of leery, you get, you get kind of nervous. So there's always gonna be different perspectives. I, I think that's one good reason that we have district representation, is that we each bring something inherently different. We, we represent different social dynamics, economic, et cetera. So tonight was certainly a first for, for me as an elected official, dating back to when I was twenty-eight. But I, I, I do, I will always contend that we need people to file for office. A majority of this board, those seats were unopposed. And you know, really, it's, you wonder, well, if, if you don't file, who's gonna file? And we need, we need, we need competition in our local elected offices. It's not, we're such a small community that, you know, if you have opposition, it's good, because at the end of the day, both candidates, or however many run, they, they really care about the situation that they live in, and they care about the children. So a few things I hope will transpire in the coming months. We're gonna continue to hit home that a majority of those seats were, were unopposed. And, and that needs to change, that needs to change. We need more buy-in to our community and especially our school districts. But the way that the statute sets it out, nobody got any no votes tonight. They were all yes votes, and, and the way it's set up, the majority rules, and that's what has taken place. But I would like to have a, another special call meeting to swear in our new board member-elect.
Next Tuesday night, we have the finance training with the booster groups and VTOs with Mike White. That's at six. You want to try to do something right before that training?
Can we do it at lunchtime?
Can we do it at lunch?
We can do it at noon, couldn't we? Or your call, because this room's pretty frequently used.
Okay. We could, we could schedule another time. I have a conflict on that Tuesday, I don't have anything on Monday. Twenty-fifth.
Could y'all, could y'all be here Monday to?
Yeah.
I have a board meeting at the Y at noon.
Should we do it right before our regular meeting?
Well, I had hoped that we would have a, a full board seated, and she would have
I mean, I can do it other times, I can do evening.
Could we do it right before meeting with Jeffrey Elmore on the twenty-eighth?
Yes, that would, could, that would be great. Could you meet on the twenty-eighth?
We have a six o'clock meeting scheduled already that we will advertise, it will be public. But it's with Representative Jeffrey Elmore. So if we could do your swearing-in at five forty-five and move right into that, or do you want to do it at five thirty?
Five thirty.
Five thirty. Will that work? Good.
Okay.
And Judge Graham to do that for us?
If he would.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, if no other business is to come before this board tonight, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So I'm a second.
All in favor, say aye. We stand adjourned.